Okay, I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of 11 April. Can we have roll call, please?
Rodriguez?
Present.
Newton?
Green?
Here.
Fragoso?
Here.
Kirline? Gonzalez Parber?
Here.
Chair Swift?
Here. Next item is approval of the agenda, and the only thing on the agenda is we have a discussion item of fence regulations regarding permitted materials, and that was based on a member of the public a couple meetings ago who asked about fence regulations in town, and I thought we could just address that with the -- at the Planning Director's comment period. We didn't need a discussion item for it, so I would suggest we would just...
Roll it into the Planning Director's report.
Roll it into the Planning Director's report.
I so move.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
One opposed.
Do you care to comment on your opposition?
Because if it's not a discussion item, then we cannot discuss. If it's a report, it's a simple report. He's speaking to us without feedback.
Okay, next, I'm going to read the meeting protocol. The Chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the Commission has responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at Commission meetings. The Commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of Commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Do we have anyone wishing to comment, make public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I will go to consent calendar. There are no items scheduled for the consent calendar, so now we're going to go to public hearing items. Our first item is 147 Pine Drive, application number 19-07. Can we have the staff report, please?
Mm-hmm. Okay, the project encompasses the enclosure of the existing 345 square foot second-floor roof deck to construct a 345 square foot family room addition, converting the existing second-floor family room into an office, and the construction of a 355 square foot roof deck off the third-floor dining and living room. The project site has a 44 percent slope, and in order to meet the minimum size and width requirements of the code, a site with a 45 percent slope would have to be 36,000 square feet in size and 154 feet wide to comply. The project site is only 18,472 square feet in size, and therefore, the project requires that the Planning Commission approve a use permit. Residential structures in the neighborhood range from 1,060 square feet in size to 2,588 square feet in size, and we've included a table in the staff report, but I won't read it. The proposed 345 square foot addition would result in 147 Pine being one of the larger residences in the neighborhood, but it would not be the largest. 153 Pine Drive is 2,588 square feet and has four bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms, and it also has the largest .35 floor area ratio due to its smaller lot size, which is 7,500 square feet. The addition would result in 147 Pine having a floor area ratio of .15, which would be similar to the .14 FARs maintained by the structures at both 103 and 182 Pine Drive, which both have larger parcel sizes. The staff report says smaller, but it should say larger parcel sizes. The proposed addition will be -- would be within the existing footprint of the residence. It would result in no disturbance to the remainder of the property, and it would also exceed the setback requirements, maintaining setbacks from the nearest neighboring structures in excess of 40 feet. The siding in the windows would match the existing structure in materials and colors. Three lights have been proposed on the south side of the new roof deck off the dining living room. Staff is recommending that the lighting be dark sky fixtures to minimize light escape beyond the deck and be subject to the approval of the Planning Director prior to issuance of the building permit, and we've included -- I hope we've included such a condition in our resolution. We meant to. So we are recommending that you approve application 1907 by adopting resolution number 2019-07, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you. Do Commissioners, any Commissioners have questions for staff?
Well, there's one photograph of the set of photographs that is the three-picture set with the -- one on the picture on the bottom shows a rather odd black hose. I'm not quite sure. So is there a drainage issue here at all? Is this property have... Well, it's the page two of the photographs.
You would have to ask the applicant that. I don't believe that where the addition's going, it will cause any kind of change. There's already -- there's an overhang where they're going to fill in with a foundation, so in other words, they're not going outside the foundation of the existing structure, so I don't believe the addition will alter drainage on the site in any way, but there could be some existing situation that I'm not aware of.
Okay, okay.
I don't know what that's...
Well, you'll have a chance. Michelle?
Linda, I had a question about, do you know what the heights are of the other homes in the area? Are they all similar heights? Is this...
You know, I have no way of really, unless I can find original construction drawings, and I can't do that here.
Right.
But they looked similar to me. I went out there and looked, and I actually wrote down the addresses that seemed very, very similar to this house. There's 151, 153, and 167 Pine looked really similar to what they're proposing to do. And I don't know if you caught in the staff report, but at the time these houses were built, the height limit was different in Fairfax.
Yes.
It was higher, and so they may look taller than what you're used to seeing with newer structures, but they're legal non-conforming.
And then I wanted to ask about the construction materials. There was a note on the plan that said during construction, the materials are going to be elsewhere. Have you had that conversation about where elsewhere is, or...
No, you should ask them.
Okay.
And we don't, you know, we... Oh, you're concerned that it might be in front of a neighbor's. I don't know why they wouldn't store them just on the parking deck, but they can address that.
Okay.
You know, they have to keep them on their property. They can't put them in the right-of-way, and they can't put them on anyone else's property unless they make arrangements with that person.
Okay.
And the only thing we're concerned about is we don't want the materials, you know, to sit around, you know, not being used for extended periods of time. That will not make the fire department happy if they start degrading on the site because they're not being used.
Right.
Yeah.
In past applications, sometimes they're triggering the conversion of the carport to a garage, and this circumstance we're not because... Is that because they're not titling something bedroom?
So we require parking to be brought up to current standards, which is for three, if you're adding a bedroom or if you're doing a 50 percent remodel, right?
Thank you.
And actually, the code changed, I don't know when the code changed, but right now parcels on the downslope are not required to even have any covered parking. They're exempt from it, so they could... If you were building a new house today, you could just have a parking deck. You wouldn't have to have any kind of a carport cover over it.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff on my left? Now, the applicant want to come up and speak to the project, and we've got a couple questions for you. You can just come up to the podium and turn on the mic.
Just hold it like that? Yeah, I mean, we're very interested in that deck area that is... It's in the middle of our house, and we have... There's no kitchen area. There's no real use for it for us, and we need an office space in order to do work from home. I'm just now changing jobs, and so it's going... And I'm going to have a work-from-home option, and so I want to be able to have an office down there in that deck area for us. We never use it because it's in the middle of the house. It's just a strange place for it for us.
I had a couple quest...
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I had a couple questions. On the pictures, well, on the plans on A 2.0, there's a reference to a third bedroom.
Right.
So if you could speak to that, and then also on the pictures submitted, and those pictures were from last July, so they may not kind of be current as far as the titling
Right.
on them, but it also references a third bedroom. But the application's, as it is now, is the existing two bedrooms, so if you could just speak to those two items?
Yeah, do you want to? Yeah, I'll let...
Hi, I'm Rhiana LaRoche with Two by Design. I'm the designer. And to speak to the reference to the third bedroom, initially, we had applied to add a third bedroom, but as we got bids and went through the planning procedure, we realized it wasn't cost-effective, and so we really looked at what the homeowner really needed, which was a working space, and so we scaled the project back. So that note of third bedroom is my fault. It's an oversight of revision to revising it back to bringing the scope back to what we've been submitted now.
Okay, thanks. Did anyone else have questions for the applicant? Michelle?
I just also wanted to ask whether the stairs going from the master bedroom below up to the living room, is that eliminated, or it's just going to remain?
No.
Okay, thank you.
None of the stairs are touched at all.
Okay, and then what my previous question about the note on the plans, construction materials kept elsewhere?
There was... I know there's a requirement that the construction materials not be kept, like, within a close proximity of the building itself.
Oh, I see.
Pardon? Yes, exact, and so that it doesn't create any kind of fire situation, so that was the note that was placed on there, so that's noted that it's not placed... The building materials are not right next to the wall of the construction.
My misunderstanding. Thank you for the clarification.
So in the pictures...
This drainage tube, we had our sewer lateral done, and so they had pulled the drainage tube from the side of the house, and that's just laying there. So there's... It's grated gravel right below there, so that was just left there, and so we've moved it since then.
Okay, and in the picture at the top here, is so there's like a dark area underneath the house, the top right picture?
Yes.
Is that what... Is that where a foundation's going to be?
Correct.
And then a wall up from that foundation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the engineering plans, when we submit the building plans, we'll have the engineering for that foundation and the wall going up, and it will be this... And we'll put the same siding on it, so it'll look the same.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Maybe it's obvious. Is... How do you come in from the carport? Is... Are you coming...
They have to come down.
Are you coming in on level three? Okay, so you're coming level three.
Correct, yeah. So level one is the master, level three is the kitchen area, and so that's why...
Here's the entry.
Okay, so you come in level three, and then two is where you've got the majority of the work?
That's right.
And then the master is down below. Okay, that makes sense.
Correct, yeah.
Thanks.
It's a lot of stairs.
Any other questions of the applicants? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for any public comment on this application. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
Okay, well, one thing that came up is about dark sky fixtures and whether that's a condition. I looked back at the conditions. It doesn't seem to be actually in the reso.
It's condition 16.
Is it 16? All right. If it is, great.
My issue is the number of fixtures in the back. They're proposing three, and I think that's...
Okay, great. So that's in the reso number 16. That was my... I think the project is a good idea, frankly. I think the... That closing that bottom gap, you know, there's fire research that says that as it is now is dangerous, and what you're doing is better so that for fire prevention. So I think it's all a good project.
Any other comments, discussion from the Commission?
No, I just also agree. I think it is a good idea. I think it's a good improvement.
Also, clearly, there's a lot of square footage, but very minimal usable outdoor space, so putting back a deck is also... Makes a lot of sense for you.
I'm in support of the application, except for I believe that having three fixtures on that small deck is too much, so I would propose amending staff's condition 16 to only approve one fixture, but I think maybe I should have gotten some feedback from the property owner on that before I surprised you with that.
How do the rest of the Commissioners feel about that?
Well, I deal with sometimes people falling off of decks because it's too dark at night. Of course, some of them might not be perfectly normal drunk or something, but that's... Lighting on a deck, I think, is a critical thing. I wouldn't have just one light on a deck that size, maybe two, but three is okay. I mean, the dark sky should take care of any problems.
Any other thoughts about the number of fixtures on that deck? Concerns?
Maybe just clarifying. So the deck is 15 feet deep, looks like maybe 15, a little bit more than 15 feet long, so it's not very deep and not very long, and so if you think about just this deck here having three lights on it, it's a lot of light.
But they are, if we were to prove this, they'd be dark sky compliant, so the lighting would be going downward, and there's two door... There's French doors there, and then another set of windows, so I think ideally you would want... And I'm not sure that I found where the lights were going to go on their... On the plans, but ideally, you would want something on both sides of the doorway and then on the far end.
There's one light on the existing deck.
So maybe just clarifying. So since there's no fixtures attached, to create a condition that says night sky can include a variety of fixture types and options like you've just brought up, as well as wattage. So we can't jump from dark sky equals having a cover over the light that points the light down. There's a gap there. It's not a do-or-die for me, so...
I don't know if you saw, the applicant asked if he would consider reopening it so he can address this. I don't know how you feel about that.
We can hear from you on this.
I mean, I'm fine with doing less than... There is a left-hand angle around the dining area, so I think at least two lights might be good, and we don't plan on putting high wattage lights out there anyway, because it's... There'd be light coming from the house, so I'm not opposed, and I don't need to shoot big spots into the sky.
Do we want to leave that up to the decision of the applicant and the Planning Director? Are you comfortable with that?
My proposal was to amend condition 16 to go down to one fixture. I'm happy to go to two fixtures.
I would support the two fixture limit.
That's fine. Yeah, that's sufficient. Phil?
Yeah, two fixtures is fine. I mean, we don't have any neighbors here protesting the potential lighting impact. That's where I'm coming from. I didn't think there's a problem, but if there... If consensus requires it, you know, two is fine, as long as the applicant's happy with that.
I'm happy to make a motion if you're ready.
I'll have a friendly amendment to it, but go ahead.
So my recommendation is for approval of resolution 2019-07 for an approximate 700-square-foot addition to an existing residence at 147 Pine Drive with the following amendments. Condition one would be amended that the building materials and color match existing. That that same condition does not approve a third bedroom, and that condition 16 be amended to approve on Plan A 1.1 two fixtures for the deck.
Okay, before we get there, for friendly amendment, I'd like to have the 16, when we speak to dark sky fixtures, can we change that to dark sky compliant on that? And then the other on page three, capitalize Planning Commission and put an absent in there for the voting section.
I accept those amendments.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and there is a 10-day appeal process, and you can get... Anyone can get information on that from staff. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. First, I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedules to attend a special meeting. We know that it was a real challenge getting the necessary quorum to be able to vote on this second item, so I appreciate that very much. This is the 14th public review of cannabis and cannabis regulations since November 2017. On March 14th of this year, your Planning Commission had a first look at these draft regulations in more or less their current form, specifically Chapter 17-110 Cannabis Uses and Chapter 5.56. And what we have tonight are three recommended actions. Okay. PowerPoint. Okay, I'm on... Oh, I think I had it pointed the wrong way. Oh, I know what I did. Yeah. I'm not a PowerPoint genius. Okay. Thank you, Michelle. It's a little bit slow. You have to touch on the screen. That's the only way it responds. Uh-oh. Wait a minute, there it is. Yay. Hoorah.
You did it.
It's done. I just want to see if we can get this to now boot up and fly right. Garrett.
Did you put the little...
Yeah, it's in.
Oh, and you turned it to the...
Oh, maybe that's not on.
Turned it on. No, now it's on.
Okay.
Throws me every time.
Sorry for that demonstration in Luddite-ism.
Now is it working?
Well, we're still requesting permission.
What I'm saying is you have to put this weird little thing in.
Oh, I get it.
I think you have to.
Yeah.
Not really though. I have to press it. That's how it talks to you.
Hooray. So that on March 14th, the Planning Commission reviewed the regulations and commented specifically on Chapter 17-110, provided a direction on a number of changes in your package. What we did was included both a clean copy of the chapter and a track changes version so that you could see the changes that we made that we believe responded to the Planning Commission's direction. The minutes also go into quite some detail about what the Commission discussed and where straw votes were taken, et cetera. There are a number of areas that we believe are either... Were either close votes, involve substantive areas, or we're not 100 percent sure if that's what your Commission wanted, and that's what we're proposing to focus on tonight. Out of tonight's meeting, the Town Council is scheduled to take up cannabis regulations at their May 1st meeting, and so the hope tonight is that we get a voting quorum on the resolution recommending the regulations to the council. It's noted that it will require a five-nothing vote, so that's just something to keep in mind when it comes to the point where you're getting ready to make a recommendation and vote on this. The other elements for your Commission's review tonight have to do with Chapter 5-56, which, as noted at previous meetings, isn't strictly within the... which, as noted at previous meetings, isn't strictly within the Planning Commission's purview because it's outside of the zoning ordinance or other areas that are the Planning Commission's direct scope. However, insofar as our regulations do involve the Commission's involvement in that chapter and the business permit licensing process, and the town likes to get the Commission's input, to the extent, once we have gone through Chapter 17-110, which is the primary focus of the meeting, once we have that deliberation, staff would recommend that you then look at Chapter 5-56 and offer comments. To the extent that you can make recommendations to the council for consideration, that's fine. Whatever the discussion is, it will be faithfully transmitted to the council in the form of minutes, so, but to the extent that there's straw votes, et cetera, would be useful to see what the Commission's recommendations are. The other thing presented before your Commission for the first time tonight are the Review Criteria Rating System. It's basically the scoring system for cannabis business applicants, and this is part of Chapter 5-56, and how we would, if necessary, winnow out applicants if there are more applicants than there are available business locations, or the possibility of business locations. Looking at 17-110 first. Some of the proposals in the Chapter 17.110 regulations have to do with a proposed 600-foot buffer for retail storefront businesses from all schools, daycare centers, and youth centers. There is also a proposed 600-foot buffer for retail delivery only, but it would only be to schools, so it would not include youth centers or daycare centers. Another item, and we would like to get the Commission's confirmation of what their desires are in that regard. Another item that was discussed at some length at the last meeting, and staff wasn't sure what the Commission's recommendations were, so we pretty much kept what we had previously proposed with one exception, had to do with parking. And what we are proposing here is to apply the same parking regulations as is standard for retail businesses for any storefront retailers, and if there is a delivery-only business, we would have the industrial standards for that. One thing that we did feel that the Commission recommended was to eliminate the requirement for an additional parking space for delivery vehicles. But again, these are areas that it wasn't really clear from the record that we could look at, so we would definitely want to get your Commission's recommendation on that. I would also additionally note that we believe it's unlikely that there would be a standalone delivery-only business, so to some extent, having the industrial parking standards based on employees might be something that's a regulatory note, but wouldn't actually occur in the real world, insofar as the Commission seemed to say in their previous deliberations on this topic, that it's the number of locations and that the actual split on uses within that, whether or not, for example, it includes a retail storefront and a delivery function is less critical. One of the key decisions that your Planning Commission appeared to make at the last meeting was to have a maximum of two cannabis retail locations of any type, and that one of those two, assuming it continues operations, would be the existing medical dispensary and retail delivery business currently in town. The retail storefronts would be limited to, the adult recreation retail storefronts would be limited to the CH and CC zones, and that for a delivery-only business, the regulations show that they could be in the CH, CC, and CL zone. Another item that seemed to be Commission consensus was to limit the total size of the business to 1,500 square feet.
Through the chair, could I ask a question before you move further on? Regarding the number of locations, would you clarify that we are counting our existing medical dispensary with their medical delivery as one business and the adult retail delivery as another, or is that all included as one?
The way it's proposed in the regulations is a location that included side-by-side businesses, even if separated, would be considered one business location, so one of the two.
Okay.
So in the instance of the existing medical dispensary with its in-the-process adult recreation delivery component, which would actually be immediately next door, the same location.
But with the separation that's required by law.
So that would only be one.
And then, one other point of clarification. You've indicated that retail businesses are allowed in the CH and CC with delivery only in CH, CC, and CL. However, in the CC zone, because of the buffer, there are very limited areas where that will be allowed.
Correct. And in fact, all of the adult recreation locations are shown on this diagram that's on your, in your packet on this board, and it's the areas that are Zone CH and are not included within the blue buffer area setbacks, and you can see the red areas are the youth-serving facilities or schools, et cetera, that create the 600-foot buffer radiating out from the edge of their property. Another item that the Commission has previously reviewed has to do with personal cannabis cultivation and something that the Commission discussed at length, and again, this is a proposal in the regulations, but something that we definitely want to get your Commission's feedback, has to do with medical marijuana administrative exemptions, exceptions, excuse me. And in the proposed regulations, we heard that the Commission wanted to allow for the possibility of somebody who qualifies to grow additional plants on their property. What we included was what's in the existing regulations of up to 18 plants. The question for your Commission is, do you want to have that be the limit, or do you believe that that limit should not be listed and it would be subject to an individual proposal? Another aspect of the medical marijuana administrative exception has to do with proximity to a school, daycare center, or youth center. As proposed, you would not be able to cultivate within 200 feet unless you received the administrative exception, and so that's a question that staff would like to have feedback from the Commission. Would that simply apply to schools, for example, or would it apply to all three youth facilities, youth-serving facilities? And the final question has to do with whether or not there would be public notice in the processing and granting of a medical marijuana administrative exception. There is no such public notice proposed in the regulations. Staff believes that insofar as the history in this town is, nobody has ever applied for such an exemption, even though these regulations have been in place for three years, that it's likely that if we did process one, it would be an after-the-fact request based on a complaint, and in such cases, whoever the complaint it was would be appraised of any decision pending and given. So we believe that the need for the public notice would be addressed in that regard. We also have concerns whether or not providing that notice might direct unwanted attention on a site for somebody who's seeking to grow that medical marijuana.
Through the chair, again, before the Director moves on.
Can we just ask, have him go through the whole thing, and then we'll have the chance to ask those, because I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure everybody else will have other questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
Wrapping up then, so what we're looking for from your Commission is to decide on what parking standards are appropriate, to confirm that there's a maximum of two cannabis businesses of any type, to confirm that a 600 buffer would apply to any retail storefront from all three of the state's categories, schools, daycare centers, and youth centers, but that the 600-foot buffer from delivery-only businesses would only apply to schools, and that personal cannabis cultivation medical exceptions would limit it to a maximum of 18 plants, and whether or not it should allow cultivation within 200 feet of a school. And staff's prepared to respond to any questions in that regard.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
I have a question. In regards to the exceptions, would you clarify, are you talking about two exceptions, one for the limit of six plants that can go to 18, and a second exception for the 200-foot proximity to a school?
Yes. This could be processed in one application, but those are two different aspects of an exception. So one is how many plants, if there indeed there should be a limit at all, and the second is regarding a buffer.
For delivery only of 200. For delivery only of the 200 feet. Okay, thank you, because I was confused. I thought the exception was just for the six plants. And the 18 plants, is that in our previous cannabis ordinance, or is that what the state suggests?
That's in our current regulations.
And what does the state say?
The state doesn't have such a provision, so this is something that's crafted for Fairfax.
Any other questions, am I right, for staff?
I brought up an issue last time, and it's not even being addressed, as to whether we can regulate the concentration of THC, and I don't know if anybody wants to go there or not. Fine, I'll drop it. I mean, it's just, if there's no consideration of it.
We heard the Commission's comments and your comments in that regard, and we felt that we wanted to get Commission consensus, if possible. Certainly, it will be included in the minutes and the discussion and deliberations of the Commission as reviewed by the council, but those are the type of things where, A, we would like to get the Commission's recommendation as a consensus body, and B, it would just be a recommendation to the Town Council in any event.
And that was also one of my notes, was where was the limiting THC levels, because I wanted that, as well as marketing materials, not for children.
Yes, and perhaps Janet could comment more on this. I believe the state has taken action about flavored products very recently in terms of proposing to ban those, so there's a recognition about some of the challenges with products that may be considered oriented towards child use.
But I believe, didn't you say materials or education materials is what you're talking about? Oh, no, you're...
They have misspoken, that the wrapping on the product, marketing materials.
So the marketing is not towards children, so for example, it's not necessarily, you're not talking about flavorings, but you're talking about superhero-like marketing type of that sort of thing. Okay, we can certainly note that.
I have a question. This is kind of a touchy one. Okay, so I know what you're looking for from us. I know that we are not creating policy, we are making a recommendation. So what happens if I've changed my mind on one of these things? I was not at the last meeting. I did see a lot of the video. In the last two or three months, I've been talking to a lot of people and have been dealing with other agencies outside of Marin County, and I have very serious concerns at this point, and so I'm trying to figure out how I can help you push this along, but go on the record that I have changed my mind about retail, adult-use retail.
So what we're looking for is a recommendation to the council that they take this matter up and some rough idea of where the Planning Commission as a whole, the majority of the Planning Commission stands on some of the issues. They are very interested in having Planning Commission feedback on some of the issues.
Right.
And so we know that when it goes up to council, it's, we're going to have a whole new discussion, and we're hoping we have covered the realm of ideas or realm of topics that might be covered at the council, because we would like to have some Planning Commission input on it. Certainly, your concerns can be noted, that you now have some concerns about adult use. Am I correct, adult use?
Adult-use retail is the one that, you know, I, generally speaking, I guess, I'm thinking, this is a big, big deal, you know, for our community. The metrics have not even been created. One of the comments I heard from the last, or a question, I don't know if it was answered from Michelle, was whether we had received any input from the police department, the fire department, EMS, and just the mechanisms to regulate a lot of the laws, you know, well, how they would apply. I'm just, I'm starting to feel like this is a really big, big deal for our community, for impacts to, you know, more than profits, traffic, crime, lots of things, and so I'm just wondering, is it possible for me to go on record saying that I don't, that I've changed my mind about something and still carry it through? Do we have to approve the whole reso?
Well, it's a recommendation, and we do need a resolution, affirmative resolution from the Planning Commission, recommending that the council consider this topic and consider that, you know, what's contained in the ordinance, with the understanding that there can be concerns expressed by individual Planning Commissioners, and that can be conveyed to the council, because the overall understanding of this is that the council is going to take this item up, and they'll take all of the concerns or issues or statements into consideration, but we, the vote is more towards getting this item to the council for them to be able to consider it. And so certainly, if you go on the record as saying, "I'm ready for this to go now to the council, to be considered by the council, but I just wanted to say that I have serious concerns about adult-use retail," then certainly that will be conveyed to the council.
Okay. And so just a point of clarification, couldn't she still vote no on the recommendation, and it can still go forward?
Do you have the code section with you?
I mean, as long as you have five votes.
Right.
They're making the final decision on the code.
Yeah, I believe they have to be five. They are making the final decision, but there's a, there is a provision in the zoning code in Fairfax that's unique to Fairfax.
Yes, in order to be an affirmative recommendation, in order to actually formally pass the resolution, you would need to have the affirmative vote of five commissioners. So in this instance, if it were, for example, a 4-1 vote, there would be no resolution going to the council. It would be considered as having failed, but it would still reflect the Commission's discussion, et cetera.
There is a, there's a provision in the code in here that we've been meaning to, and we need to get altered. It will come to you before it goes to the council for alteration, but it does, I'll read it to you here when we find it. You can see that it is a unique provision and concerning changes to the zoning code.
What do you mean?
And so, just give me one, one second here, and we will... It's under, it's under amendment, zone change, yeah.
Try 17.004-100PND?
100D?
I believe.
It's right there. We've got a tag on it, yeah. "The recommendation of any amendment to this title, being the zoning code, shall be by resolution of the planning commission, carried by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of its total voting membership." Not less than two-thirds.
And so because...
So for seven requires five.
Of those present or of the total?
No, of the total membership of the body.
Can I ask, okay, so if we strike something from the reso, we strike something that gets approved, goes up as a recommendation, the town council has the discretion to add it back in?
Absolutely. The town council can modify, it can and will. I mean, expect that they're taking your comments into consideration, but expect that what you're seeing before you is going to change. It just is.
Okay. Because, yes, I really want to help you push this through. I would like to accomplish that tonight. But, you know, I have very serious concerns from what I've heard in the last two or three months. So I was kind of leaning a certain way, and, you know, had a few moments of clarity where I think it all kind of came together. And I, you know, feel terrible that we've come this far along, but maybe there's a reason it's taken 14 sessions. This is a really tough one.
Yes.
And, you know, I just, I feel like our duty is to serve the community and the citizens, especially where it comes, or where health and our young children, you know, our developing children are concerned. But more than anything, it's just, you know, we do this because we want to serve the community and the public. And so, and just thinking in general, I, you know, just, you have to make tough decisions sometimes. But it sounds like it's not do or die for Fairfax. We just can push up a recommendation.
Right, it's not the final, it's not the final word.
Yeah, it's not the final word.
Right, it's going to be reviewed and undoubtedly changed by the council. And so the council will hold hearings, will hear a lot of public input. There will be some, probably some changing to the recommendation of the planning commission. So what we need to do is not run out of time.
Okay.
And we know that there are going to be a number of hearings at council. And so we need to be able, given one meeting a month, we need to be able to move it along.
Okay, well, that's reassuring, because I definitely would like to push this. I mean, there are many reasons why, you know, why I do this, or why we do this. And so, okay, great, thank you.
Any other, oh, sorry. Any other questions for staff?
Yes, just to clarify, if we don't have a unanimous vote of those present, which would be the quorum required, then the item still goes to council, but not with an adopted reso, but as recommendations only?
Well...
Come back to us.
It's an interpretational issue. You know, if we, if it appears that we don't have five affirmative votes to move this along to council, it may be a good idea to continue it to one more meeting, where we may have five, six, seven, five, six people, I guess, and so that we would have five affirmative votes, but...
We would have, we would have one more, right?
Yeah, we would have one more.
Or another option would be to modify the regulations, and that's something I didn't say in my presentation, is that even though the focus, we had hoped, would be on the items for which there wasn't sufficient clarity on the commission's direction to staff regarding 17-110, it may be possible that adjustments could be made, are directed to the ordinance, and that we could garner the necessary five votes to have that resolution. So, and again, the minutes, as you know from looking at the minutes that are attached to this item, are pretty comprehensive. So I think there's probably a way to have a conversation about those topics and hopefully still arrive at a five-person unanimous vote.
Or we continue it. And, you know, because I, and I can go on the record as to why I've changed my mind, but, yeah, this is a tough one. So I think it would have to be amended.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Anyone want to comment? Please come up to the podium. Thank you. State your name and residence, if you'd like.
Don Carney, 32 Mountain View, for a long time, 40 years. My eyes are going, I can't read the sign. What is your name on the right?
I'm not sure I want to say. It's Gonzalez, Esther Gonzalez Parver.
Esther, I want to commend you on doing some homework. I want to commend you on the bravery of changing your mind. And I want to commend you on protecting the community and seeing that as your highest calling in this role that you're in on the planning commission. I admire that, that framing of your role and taking care of the community and taking care of the kids, because it all dribbles down to the kids. I would prefer that you do go on the record, as opposed. I would prefer that it do get extended. Maybe your peers can get educated as well. All of us are capable of learning new things and changing our mind. I would hate to see anything sort of jerry-rigged that would exclude your epiphany on this issue. I think that's important to go into the record. I'm eager to hear what you've learned and why you've changed your mind. And I would like others to explore it as well. There are a lot of people in this community you could reach out to, to get more education on this issue. I'm a little disappointed Fairfax didn't ask for Public Health to come in and make a more robust presentation consistently as this proceeded. We're learning a lot about the impact of this. Lancet just came out a couple of weeks ago, saying it's very clear, high-grade THC creates psychotic breaks. So we're learning a lot about this week to week to week. So I think it's prudent to be very cautious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hearing none, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And I think since we had a couple items that were holdovers from the last meeting, I think I'd like to address those. I know when I went through the video after, we had a lot of, we made a lot of straw votes at that time, and there were a couple items, I think, that were left over. I'd at least like to address those as Planning Director Burdo commented. So perhaps the first one I'd speak...
Tell us what the three are.
Yeah, the first one that we had left over was parking. I think, looking at the meeting from last time, we were supposed to circle back on the parking standard as it related to delivery vehicles, and we never did that. So I think what I recall from that meeting was, I think we were all in concurrence on the standards for the retail, for the three parking spaces per 500 feet, and the delivery-only standard that is in the code, and the only one, was a discussion of whether there should be a parking space for each delivery vehicle. That one, we never got back to, to talk about. So I wanted to at least kind of check back on that one. I know at the time, we talked about, there was some discussion about treating these the same as other similar retail, I mean, other retail businesses in town. And we talked about, you know, like a restaurant making a delivery, that type of thing. And those don't necessarily have requirements for having a delivery vehicle on-site. But I did take a look at the state code, and I think, you know, my perspective on that item is that I don't think the state treats delivery vehicles for cannabis the same as any other kind of retail store or retail operation. They require them to be unmarked, they require them to have a GPS that's owned by the business owner, so they can track everywhere that, that vehicle goes to. What else? They can't leave goods unattended in the vehicle without it being a locked container and a vehicle having an active alarm system. So my concern with that is, is having no space on a property, either delivery-only or retail storefront, for having that delivery vehicle parked there means that a delivery vehicle would be parked on the street or somewhere in the proximity of the business, which means that the employee, that is, the delivery person, needs to carry to and from the business to that vehicle and back. And I think, for the purposes of parking and the purposes in the community of kind of a security standpoint, I think it would be appropriate to have parking requirements for any delivery vehicles that a business would have. So that was my thought on that. I don't know, can check if I want to go the right first, how, and just get another poll of that as we go through from the folks on my right, how you feel about the requirement for a delivery vehicle parking.
Staff has drafted something in 17.110.040C, and I, no change.
Commissioner Green?
I also have reread state regulations on delivery vehicles. And even though I would, may have been one of the proponents of having, you know, delivery businesses have a dedicated space for their vehicle, I, I believe that the state regulations are so tight about the sealed containers and that it wouldn't, wouldn't matter. So I'm no longer pushing for an additional parking space required for a business with a delivery component, myself. I don't think it's, based on the state regulations being as tight as they are, I don't think we need that. So I also have changed my mind and gone the other direction.
Norma?
I think that we should keep the industrial use standard for delivery-only.
But that didn't, I don't think we had a requirement in there for parking, the, for a parking space for the delivery vehicle.
That was the additional space, the industrial standard.
Yes, it's there.
Is what requires the additional space.
It's on page five. And it's the industrial standard.
If you, if you want the additional space, then that would be the industrial standard that Director Bento suggested. And I agree with that.
So you agree with draft as written?
Yes.
Okay. Esther?
Okay, so this kind of goes back to retail, okay, cannabis retailers. But this is for delivery owning only, so this is a retailer delivery. So I'm okay with the way it's written.
Clarification? I believe what I'm hearing your commission saying is that if they're going to have a delivery business component, they're going to have employees engaged in delivery, and hence, it would, staff would more than likely dictate that they would be providing a parking space, so.
Through the chair, you had three items you wanted to discuss.
I'm getting there. The second one was the cultivation and the exception for on the number of plants that could be grown. When I looked at the video and took kind of the straw poll over the, off the video, I think we didn't have a limit on the number of plants that could be requested for the exception. And the thinking there was, with all the other requirements for having cultivation, that they would have to fit those. So I believe, looking at that video, we came out with a straw poll of not having a limit on the number, the additional number that could be requested. So I just wanted to get clarification on that from folks. So let me find that.
Page eight, 17.110.310C4.
So looking at the notes I took from the video, I believe we had exceptions to the number of plants, and the final outcome of our discussion on that was to remove 17-110-310C4 regarding setting a number, a maximum number of plants. So I just wanted to clarify that, how we felt on that.
Okay, well, I have done a bit of research, and so, so it depends kind of for me whether you're doing outside or inside cultivation. Because my research tells me that if you're doing inside cultivation, in order to get the same, or try to get the same amount of material, you know, smokable product, et cetera, that you would need 18 inside to be the equivalent of about five or six outside. So that's, that's where maybe we need to kind of divide that up a little bit and say, no more than 18 plants for inside cultivation, but I don't think we would want that, or anybody would even need it. I mean, the problem here is, we need to consult with an M.D. and sort of find out, you know, if someone is in the situation... you know, if someone is in the situation of, of, you know, in a wheelchair with shivers and shakes and what their horrible condition might be, how much they might need. We don't know. This is the problem I'm having with this, with this situation. And how can we say, yes, you know, you can't have more than 18 plants, when some doctor might say, well, they need way more than that. And they can't afford to buy it. So, you know, that's, that's the problem. Of course, they can go buy, if they're millionaires, they can buy whatever medicine they need. But I don't see how we're going to dictate this. But I do know about this equivalency of six outdoor producing about the same as 18 indoor. So I'm not quite sure what to do about it.
So do you, it sounds like you're going with no limit? I mean, with, with dropping that limit of 18 based on the, the medical requirement?
Yeah, I, I would almost say no limit for inside cultivation. But I think a, a limit of out, for outside cultivation in an exception would not be cast in stone. You wouldn't say a maximum of 18 plants. You'd have to see what the doctor's note says, sort of thing, right? Take it on a case by case basis. Also with the location of the property. Is it a little shack with a tiny, with a, you know, five foot setback all around it? Or is it on a large lot? You know, some of these things are parameters that hopefully, when someone applies, I mean, applies for such an exception, that that's taken into consideration. I'm sure it is. outdoors, I think we need a limit. I don't think we should have one for indoor cultivation. So that's, number four is a little too simple for me.
Through the chair, I, I understand your train of thought. And then I'm thinking, okay, my house is like a thousand square feet at most. And I, I think 18 mature plants would be a, would be a hazard in, in a, in a small home.
You mean within the home or outside the home?
Within a home, it seems to me that having 18 mature plants could be a hazard. If you're using grow lights and heat lamps and we don't know what they're going to be doing, how they'll be raising those 18 babies.
If I may?
Please.
So the way the exception language is written right now, the requested exception, the things that the town manager may grant an exception for if the following findings can be made, only if the following findings can be made, there's a demonstrated medical need. The requested exception should not constitute a public nuisance. I would think that would be for outdoors and the neighbors. And then for indoor cultivation, the building official may require additional specific standards to meet the California Building Code and Fire Code, including but not limited to installation of fire suppression sprinklers, code compliant electrical systems, or a one-hour firewall assembly. So those, those concerns about indoors can be taken into account via that finding.
And I like the way that's written, actually. If it could be left that way, I would be comfortable with that, that there's, and also the regulation is no more than six plants per private residence, whether indoors or outdoors. Does that mean six indoors and six outdoors?
No.
It means combined.
You could have three outside and three indoors.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I, I could leave it with that, without a specific number for exception, to be determined based on the specific situation under the town manager's discretion. Is that the way it reads?
Yes.
Well, right now, it has the, the limit of 18, and that was the question. So whether we delete that limit of 18 and leave it with all this.
I would just delete the 18.
Okay.
Yeah, the thing is, go take a look at a farm. If you have 18 plants, you've got a Christmas tree lot. I'm serious. So think about that.
At, at the risk of leading this discussion astray, one of the items that your commission will be reviewing tonight is the review scoring criteria rating system. And when it comes to public benefits, it's talking about provisions for low-income medical patients. And this is the type of thing where Fairfax gets to craft its criteria for what would be an acceptable or the highest rated commercial applicant. I, I think there may be some concern that everybody's sort of Paul Bunyan in the wilderness, trying to grow sufficient crop to meet their medical needs. But I think it comes around to the fact that if we do end up with a business and if the regulations do include discussions or requirements or criteria that say, how does your business help these type of individuals? That it's, these are well-established criteria in other communities. There, there are businesses in other communities that go a long ways towards providing low-cost or no-cost medicine for, for individuals who are, are in need and don't have the money to purchase it. So I'm just throwing that out there, that it's not just, do you have enough plants in your yard or not?
Well, we had a, to that, we had a commissioner at the last meeting speak about folks wanting to be assured of what they are taking and, and by doing that, growing their own and using those in edibles. So that, to me, doesn't necessarily tie in with that. But that's something certainly to look at as we go over those scoring criteria. Esther? Yeah, Esther, sorry.
What my opinion is on the number, on number four, is we're talking about 17.110.310C4, right? So I, I think, I think it should be the administrative's discretion. And I mean, I think it can be more than six, up to 18, but I, I don't, I don't like the number on here. So I, I think a more general description of allowance is acceptable.
I'm happy with staff's recommendation.
Another, another reason maybe not to have a number is, like you said, Ben, that some, you know, you're likely to get a regulate, a regulation issue by a neighbor reporting, perhaps. And if, if someone planted 18 plants in something that shouldn't have been planted with 18 plants, the number in this, in the statute, in the ordinance will sort of suggest that number or embolden people to go ahead and plant 18. Why, you know, why shouldn't they, right? So maybe not having a number is a better thing and having, so I'm, I'm with everybody who says that discretion would be a better idea than a number here. And then, of course, you've got the doctor's note and all that to go on.
Through the chair, the language could be more along the lines of based on medical need and the conditions, the health and safety conditions on that property. It could be at the town manager's discretion, the number that would be allowed. Because, you know, if they do live out in the boonies with 10 acres, it's different than if it's a little 500 square, 500 square foot house in town.
Okay, so I think for that one, the consensus would be to delete that, that part of the code. There was another item in there that talked about, and a couple commissioners brought up the, along the exception process, that if the town manager approves an exception, it talked about the aggrieved party. You know, we asked, who was the aggrieved party? And then how would they be notified? Because there is a time limit in this section that says, with respect to the exception requested under Section 17110.310, may appeal said decision within 10 days of the date of the decision to the planning commission. So I think part of the questions, and that didn't really get changed at all from the last meeting, I think part of the, the questions there was because there is a 10-day limit, a 10-day from the date of the town manager's decision, how does somebody meet that 10-day timeframe to put in an appeal of an exception? So maybe the question was, you know, is that 10 days to appeal appropriate to be in there since there's not necessarily a way somebody would know there's been a decision made on an exception?
There needs to be a written, excuse me, through the chair, there needs to be a written decision on a request for an exception that an appeal would be based upon. And it's typically 10 days from receipt of such notification.
But I think the issue was, how does somebody know that when somebody comes in and asks for an exception and they've got all their paperwork and that exception is approved, how does some, and the decision is made, so the decision has a date on it, how does somebody else who may want to appeal that know that that even occurred to be able to appeal within that 10-day period? And that was the question.
Public notice is not a requirement. It's the applicant who has the right to appeal, not somebody else in the neighborhood.
But it doesn't say that.
Staff believes that the two likely circumstances where somebody would want to appeal would be a situation where somebody was growing in their yard within 200 feet of a school or had a lot of plants, more than six in any event. And a neighbor said, no, I'm, I'm not happy with that. And brought it to the attention of the administrator, of the staff. Staff went out there and confirms that, yes, there's more than six plants and you'd have to get this exception. So would initiate a complaint follow-up. The applicant would have to then apply for that exception. At that point, I could say as a matter of standard practice, whoever the person filing the complaint was, would be notified. The other circumstance, and so when there's a decision, they would be able to appeal that decision if they weren't happy with that. The other circumstance would be if the medical applicant themselves felt somehow aggrieved by a decision. For example, if the plants were more than seven feet tall or was visible, this, that, and the next, and some conditions were applied or the number of plants were directed to be reduced, they would obviously be aware of the decision and would be able to appeal it. So the two real-world examples where there might be an appeal filed, I think are adequately addressed. But this is why we brought it to the commission's attention.
So for another hypothetical, I'm an applicant and I'm not growing anything at the moment in my yard. So I come in to the town and say, you know, here's my documentation. I want to grow in my yard more than six plants. But I haven't grown any at all yet. So the town hypothetically makes a decision that in favor of that, so approves that exception. That's got a date on it. But I haven't started growing anything. And in here, there's a 10-day from the date of that decision, appeal timeframe. So nobody else, the neighbors, nobody else are going to have a clue that that appeal, that somebody submitted an exception and it was approved. So that's my concern with, with having a 10-day timeframe in here, that I'm not sure somebody in all circumstances would be able to meet that. And that's why I raised that question.
Here's my suggestion. When did we adopt cultivation? Two years ago? No one has come in to request an application or permit because my take is, if you were growing it before we adopted ordinance, there's no need for you to come in and let us know, since nobody knew before. And if you were to come in, technically, that would be subject to the public records request. And then everybody would know you'd be growing. So I think in this case, I think we just leave it as is and let's see. An applicant may appeal if they didn't like, you know, denied 100 plants, gave them 90 or something like that. And maybe they might. But what happens is, that comes to the planning commission, then everybody knows they're growing 100 plants. So I would say, let's play it by ear and let's see if anything really happens with this. Because a lot of times, we have things and we're not sure how it's going to work out. So this is one where I think we just wait and see.
Do we, because I don't have it in front of me, do we remember what the existing cultivation exception policy had in it as far as the notice period?
There wasn't any noticing, but.
I mean, as far as having to appeal within 10 days?
Oh, the appeal part. That I'm not sure.
That's the part I'm concerned about.
Yeah. That one, though, was note, and you could grow as many plants as you could in 100 square feet, which could be a lot. But we never got anything. So I couldn't really tell you what that appeal is, although the town code allows people to appeal administrative decision. That's 10 days.
Also, through the chair, I don't believe one can appeal the six-plant limit until you've grown your six plants and you realize you need more. You can't go in before you grow a plant and say, I'm not going to make it with six, I need 20 plants. The appeal comes after you've grown your six plants.
Our regulations are also based on mature plants. So in recognition of the fact that you might be growing male plants or they may not survive, so that, that's something in our provisions. It's six mature plants. So until they get to be mature, it's, it's not regulated by number.
So from a, I mean, I guess from a process or legal standpoint, are we okay with this going forward, the way it is, with that time limit in there?
Maybe we should say mature plants, then, if that's what we mean. It's another issue, by the way, in 17110.310, a vague provision in B. Do you mind? I'll let it wait, but there's a problem in B.
So I, I mean, if I'm the only one here that has a concern with this, that's fine. And let me just finish my last one, because that was easy, and then we'll go. In 17110.320A, Chapter 1.12 is underlined, and I wasn't sure if that was supposed to be underlined or if that was just an error.
We forgot to take out the underline.
Thank you. Other comments, questions on this? Phil?
Okay, there's, in, in B, 17110.310B, there's a, to me, strange phrase. "Any request for a medical cannabis administrative exception shall be submitted to the town manager along with documentation," and then this part is kind of strange. "such as a physician's recommendation or verification of one, verification of more than one qualified patient living in the residence, demonstrating why the standard is not feasible." What is this thing about verification? How does a verification of more than one qualified patient living in the residence equate a physician's recommendation at all? Or is it not meant to be an or there as an alternative method?
So, you want me to do it? What that's saying is that if there's two people living in the residence who both need cannabis, and it's a six-plant-per-parcel limit, so maybe they each need 10. So that's, or maybe they need 12. Let's, let's say they need 12, not six. Because each one needs six.
Right.
And so that would be a reason for getting an exception, because there are two people who need.
But each one of, each one of them, but they're not, so the way this, the way this could be read, and the way I looked at it at first, I was thinking, how's that possible? So each, so if two, if one or more than one patient living in a residence requires more than, more plants, then they should each have a physician's recommendation, right?
But what if they each need six?
Then that's what the physician's recommendation would need to say for each person.
Right, but it's, since it's a six-plant-per-parcel limit, if they both live in the residence and they both need...
Well, then, then, then the administrator would have to figure that out.
Right, right.
But the problem with this, if this is ordinance language, is it could be read by someone to say, "Oh, I don't need a physician's recommendation if I can get the verification of more than one." So my friends verifying in the house can verify it, and we don't need a physician's recommendation. That's the way that could be read.
I think, I think that was the intended, I think that was intended. So if you need six and your wife needs six, neither one of you needs to get a physician's recommendation, but we need some indication that we need, the reason is that there are two qualified patients there who need, each needs six.
But you would not know that they're both qualified. I'm sorry, it just looks like you could eliminate the physician's recommendation entirely if you get two people in the house who say they need it.
So we can, we can modify that.
So I think the language needs to be just clarified there.
Okay.
I understand what you mean.
Yeah.
Just isn't what that necessarily says to some people and perhaps a judge in the future.
Right. Along with documentation from the physician, to be a physician's recommendation.
And/or.
What's defined?
Well...
I guess I'm at, what's qualified, is defined?
What Commissioner Green is saying, I believe, is that he wants a doctor's recommendation, a physician's recommendation regardless, if there are more than six plants per parcel, right?
Right. For each person who wants more than that.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's, if you've got a large lot in a remote location and you want to grow 36 plants because they're thinking twice 18, and there's two people in the house, each one of them should have its own, that person's own separate physician recommendation. And under the privacy laws involving HIPAA, they would like need to each have their own physician's recommendation. But there is no, I mean, I just don't want the language to be ever interpreted as, "We don't need any physician's recommendations if we got two guys in the house who think they need 18 plants." That's what it reads.
But they're, when they're qualified, when they're qualified patients, they have to have the card.
The definition is they have to have the state identification card.
Well, who knows if that requirement's going to be, we're going to be...
We don't know.
We're lucky if we're going to have any medical marijuana law at all in a few years, I think.
Right. So you just think that anything over six plants should have a doctor's recommendation?
Right. Each one, two, three, 10 people, whatever it is.
We can certainly modify that.
But does everybody agree with Phil?
Yes.
That that should be the case?
Is that a commission direction?
Yeah, is that a commission direction?
That if you want more than six, you should have a physician's recommendation, which is also other stated in C1. But if we want to make that clear, and maybe we could wordsmith it for what goes to the council to further clarify that. We'd just like to get a, yeah, just a consensus, a straw vote from your commission on that topic.
Everybody agrees or not?
Right, again, and we just don't want it so that two people in the house say, "Yeah, we want so many plants. Forget the doctor, we don't need that," because that's what this says, so...
I see three hands saying, "Get a physician's recommendation."
Regardless, four.
Okay. I mean, I think I'm fine with the language as is, but if the majority feels it needs to be changed, go for it.
Did the chair complete her three, her three items, her three pending items, then?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Because the elephant in the room that I still see is the number of locations. The number of locations. And I have a question, another question in that regard. Now, are existing medical cannabis retail, medical cannabis delivery, and adult retail delivery are all considered one because they're in the same location? So my question is, if we go with what's proposed, that we have two retailer locations, that means that only one other location could come in, but they could do all three. They could do medical, they could do retail, they could delivery.
Only if approved that way.
Excuse me?
Only if approved that way.
Yes, yes. But typically, they could be doing all... They could be doing all three. But it would have to be only from one location. And that location needs to be in that little yellow area that was identified, not within a buffer. And this is, this is one I go back and forth on, honestly. I started thinking maybe two or three, but then when I realized that one can be doing three different things, I'm reconsidering whether I agree with two or whether I think we should leave it at one.
So there was, there was a lot of discussion about competition being a good thing, and I think that was the reason for considering a second location. And also, I think that in the future, you're going to see a blending and probably a changing in the state regulations about medical and adult use. And I think it's going to more, this is my opinion, it's going to morph into one thing. There's going to be just retail, period. And that retail is probably going to want to do delivery. And so I don't see that there's going to be really an awful lot of difference. I don't think it's going to be like three things happening in one place. I think it's going to be one shop that has cannabis for sale, medical as well as, as adult use, and they also do delivery. That's what I envision that second shop being.
The question will be, under our, what is proposed, would the commission recommend that the restriction continue, that if you have anything but medical cannabis or delivery only, that it be allowed in the CL zone or within the buffer area? Because as these regulations are written, the current business, which is the medical dispensary and predates all of this, and the regulations that were passed by the council last December allow the adult recreation retail only in that location. So the question would be, do we carry that restriction forward?
Recreation in that location or delivery only?
Delivery only.
Delivery only.
Delivery only, adult use, delivery only.
But that's, but that does not open it up to a new business coming into that same zone. It's only for the existing, pre-existing business, not for new businesses to come into that same area, which is precluded from new businesses coming into it.
It's in the buffer.
New business cannot go into that area.
Correct.
I think if we, if we have fewer, if we have one only, we are kind of creating a monopoly, and I'm concerned about that factor. The reason I think we have two, and some people want, you know, three of each, I don't know, whatever, I think that we have two as a, as a, as a good hedge against monopoly and creativity. And competition is a good thing. I mean, so we have many bars in town. They're all really unique. They're all really have their own thing because everybody wants something different out of a bar. There's a bike bar with hot dogs and et cetera. You know, we've got great, great little bars and things. Same here. I think we want to encourage creativity. The state licensing scheme will make them put walls and locks and security and all kinds of not, you know, not have any smells go out of the room and all that stuff. The state regulations are pretty heavy, so not too worried about it. I think we need two. Some people wanted more, but I think for, for competition purposes only, if nothing else, we should have a minimum of two.
So, it's so funny, you all are coming around to where I started, which was that the existing was fine, and that's why I was in support of streamlining them, getting their retail. So I'm in support of reducing it down to one if you want it. And the original reason why I was there was because I don't feel like we need to be on the cutting edge of opening up this door, of being the smallest in physical size community in Marin County and, and being on that competitive edge on this particular topic. I just think there's too many unknowns and it's just, I'd rather be, I would have rather have spent 14 meetings on a different topic.
Yeah, that's, that's true, too. I agree with that. But, you know, so if we had the buffers that we apply to cannabis for bars, we'd have maybe one bar in town. So, so, you know, if you look at the map, the little yellow squares, and we allow two businesses, where are they going to be? This is the question. So the answer is, you know, fairly obvious, we're going to have, have one, likely, but I think we need to allow for two because someone might appeal this very high and call it a monopoly and saying, "We're supporting a monopoly, and I don't want that."
So, if I may, for just one, one point of procedure, before we get to a point of a vote, I'd like to have a few minutes with the chair and take a few minutes, like a five-minute recess.
Sure.
Thank you.
Bathroom break. So I think we're done with questions and discussion on this. Janet, do you want to?
Okay. So at the beginning of the meeting, I read to you 17.004.100D, talking about amendments to the zoning code. And it says, "The recommendation of any amendment to this title shall be by resolution of the Planning Commission carried by the affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of its total voting membership." So that's five, okay? Five people to make a positive recommendation and take it on to council. But for matters, if you turn the page, for matters where the plant, where the council has asked the Planning Commission to weigh in on an item and issue, and this is not for applications by the public, this is where the council has asked for the Planning Commission's input, you have 17.004.110, talking about the particular decision of the Planning Commission regarding an amendment. And so it gives you a timeframe. Within 40 days after conclusion of a public hearing, the Planning Commission shall, by resolution, make its findings, decisions, and recommendations in the matter. Now, you know, we've gone way past 40 days of the closing of the first public hearing here, but nevertheless, if you continue on down, you'll see in C, "In matters initiated by the council, the Planning Commission's failure of the Planning Commission to adopt a resolution of approval within the 40-day period shall be deemed to constitute approval of the proposed amendment." So that's a sort of a deemed-approved provision is what that's commonly referred to as. So if you don't take any action and you don't do anything, within 40 days of the close of a public hearing, we can deem that approval and it can go on to council. Continuing on down, in E, "In matters where the council has asked the Planning Commission to, to make a recommendation and the Planning Commission votes to approve the proposed action, it goes on to the council within 10 days from this date of action," or I suppose at the next meeting, "and a copy of the resolution, a copy of the written summary of the testimony, so any comments by any of the planning commissioners, and a copy of the recommended amendment will be forwarded on to council." The provision that you should also be aware of, though, contained in F, where it says, "In matters initiated by the council, if recommendation of the Planning Commission is to disapprove the proposed action," and that would mean you don't have the five affirmative votes to approve. You take a vote, you don't have five affirmative, that's a disapproval. Then the resolution and other papers shall be forwarded to the council as provided in E above, which basically means if you vote and it's a 4-1 or a 3-2 tonight, it's a disapproval. But because the council has asked the Planning Commission to weigh in on this, we can go ahead and take that to the council with all the testimony, with all the comments, with everything, from the public, from all the commissioners, and present it to the council as the Planning Commission was able to obtain enough votes to approve a recommendation on this amendment, but here's what they did do, and here's what they said, and here are their thoughts and their concerns, and so the council can take it from there. So I recommend, instead of not taking any action and letting 40 days elapse where we can take it as a deemed-approved, I recommend that you go ahead and vote. And if we don't have the five affirmative, well, we don't have the five affirmative. We'll just simply take it as whatever we have with, we didn't get a consensus recommendation from the Planning Commission, but here's what they did do, and here's what they said, and here are their concerns.
That seems, that seems good. It doesn't, it doesn't extend the time period and put us in any jeopardy in that regard, and council can move forward regardless of how our vote turns out.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
Regardless of how the count turns out tonight, say that it doesn't get approved and it, all the comments, recommendations, decisions get sent up to council, when would we be able to reconsider this? Would it, I mean, we can amend the codes or the resolution within seven years, you know? How many times within, what timeframe are we looking at?
Well, presumably, the council will then have a number of meetings and consider and figure out what they're going to do, if they're going to take this, how they're going to change it, modify it, whatever they're going to do. And they would then have finalized ordinance presented to them, it would go for two readings, introduction and adoption, and then 30 days after that, it would become effective. And upon being effective, if the Planning Commission decided that they wanted to review any provision, any particular provision of the zoning code, then there is a way by which you can do that. There's no set time limit that it has to be in effect before you can decide by a majority vote that you would want to review it or look at it again.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, I'm going to take a vote on approving the ordinance with the draft to move it up to council.
So we're approving it as it is without any of our proposed changes?
We had, I think, tonight, we had the change on deleting the limit of the exception. We deleted the underline out of that one section, and I think we left the parking as is in there. I think those were the only changes we made tonight.
We will work on clarifying the requirement to get a physician's recommendation for the medical exception to proceed forward with that.
That was the fourth thing, that was Commissioner Green's.
Can I, can I bring up another language issue? Just, just, just doesn't quite read right. It's 17-110-230A. That first paragraph needs work somehow. A medical marijuana dispensary that was legally operating as of April 3, 2018, and is permitted by the town to operate a medical marijuana delivery service, let's see, may operate as a permitted, as a permitted use in any commercial district.
Uh-uh. No.
An adult-use cannabis delivery-only service from its then-existing premises, subject to each of the following conditions. It just doesn't read quite right.
Deleting may operate as a permitted use in any commercial district.
That might be, that might be the problem.
But isn't qualifier on that, "from its then-existing premises," that has the limitation to where it is now?
Yeah.
That clause, "May operate as a permitted use in any commercial district," is meant to describe the adult-use cannabis delivery-only service. Can operate, you could also say, could operate adult-use cannabis delivery-only service as a permitted use. service as a permitted use.
That's, that's where I was thinking of it.
From its then-existing premises.
Right. That's where, okay, that clears it up then.
Okay. We can modify it.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
That's the will of the commission.
And are we gonna separately then address the, this draft document in back?
You mean the five?
The criteria?
Yeah, we're gonna do that after we do 17.
Okay.
So, with those five changes, do I have a, someone wanna make a motion? Do you wanna? Do we need it as, should, do we need it as a motion or can we just state?
I think we need it as a vote. If we're gonna have, we're gonna take it as a, as a approval, then five affirmative, or we're gonna take it as a disapproval, any other type of, of...
Need a motion.
Yeah, you need a motion. A second.
So, can someone make a motion on this and then we'll take the vote?
Can we clarify, can we clarify the changes once again that we, that we agreed to? We, we did the, the parking for delivery, the...
Parking note change. The exceptions, we eliminated the 18.
Limit of 18.
We deleted the underline of chapter 1.12, that was in one of the sections, and then we had the two language changes of Commissioner Green's, correct?
Right. One at 7-110-230A.
310.
And 310B.
Yes, and we understand the intent there.
Okay.
So, with that, can someone make a motion?
So, with that, what's the resolution number, 18-dash?
It's 19, there's a correction.
2019-08.
2019-08.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the, that resolution number 2019-08, with the changes to the ordinance that we have suggested, be approved or be passed on to the Town Council as our recommendations indicate.
Do I have a second? Can I make a second? Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Two, three.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I would, I would like to maybe try another motion. Does that, what do you think of an alternative motion?
Well, we're already going to...
Okay.
So, we'll go on to five?
5-56, yes. So, as indicated in my earlier comments, this is not something for which staff is proposing that commission take formal action. The commission has previously discussed this and provided some feedback and certain modifications were made by staff in regards, in response to that feedback. To just provide a quick overview of chapter 5.56, Commercial Cannabis Business Permits, and I apologize for these mics, they're really tricky. As an overview, the substantive areas in 5-56040, that talks about matching the number of businesses at the same level as the chapter 17-110, i.e. two discrete business locations. And it's note that the limits would not apply to an existing, ongoing dispensary, the permit requirements, that is, not the numerical requirements. Other elements have to do with the application, that we would list a closing date in an application period to basically assemble all interested applicants, cannabis business applicants, by that date. It's noted that all current zoning applications would also have to be concurrently submitted, so it would be one package, including the business license requirement information. 070 talks about review and action on the applications. This would consist of two phases. The first has to do with the pre-screening and review of the criminal history, and we're looking to make sure that the zoning applications are complete, that they have enough information in that regard, and the police would conduct a background check. That would be the specific responsibility of the police chief to conduct a criminal background check. For any applicants not disqualified by reason of either the background check or the zoning requirements, they would move on to phase two, which is the application processing. there would be a numerical review criteria rating system, and your commission has before you as an attachment, I think it's attachment six, for the first time tonight, a draft, and I want to emphasize that word, draft, rating system. This is simply because this is an integral part of chapter 5-dash, it's not part of the chapter, but it's part of the process of reviewing cannabis business applicants. So, time permitting tonight, we will also be looking at that, but that would be part of the Planning Commission's review. They would assign a numerical score to each of the businesses, provided that those businesses met a minimum score, and under the proposed regulations, it would be an 80-point total out of a total of 100 for the Planning Commission's review. It would go on to the Town Council. The Town Council would interview additional, the qualifying applicants, assuming that there were more applicants than there were number of available potential cannabis business location numbers. So, if there are, for example, two more applicants and there were one additional possible business allowed in town, that would end up before the Town Council, assuming that both of those businesses met the minimum qualifying scores to go on to the council. Once, the Town Council would make a decision on which business or business says, depending on the total number allowed, would be approved, and the town manager would subsequently issue the business permit. In terms of the three-element review criteria rating system, staff is proposing these consist of three primary criteria, those three criteria being business qualifications in a business plan, quality of the operating plan, and public benefit. And there are a number of sub-criteria underlying each of the main criteria, and their proposed scoring totals applied to each of the main of the primary criteria, amounting to a potential maximum total of 100 points. There was a question about whether or how we arrived at this scoring criteria system, the review criteria. This is an amalgam of other jurisdictions. For example, the County of Marin, San Rafael, and San Jose all have somewhat similar scoring systems. Sinterfell has something that's fairly similar, Marin Counties is very similar. The criteria were also reflective of issues that have been repeatedly addressed at the last 13 public review sessions on cannabis. And they also attempted to embody qualities or criteria that are oriented towards the unique characteristics of this community. Those include items like paying a living wage, provisions for social equity, green business rating, provisions for addressing youth use, so youth education and prevention programs, participation, green business ratings, and organic pesticide-free. It's noted that there are areas, the state's review criteria are also part of it because it's noted that the state occupies a large part of the review, and therefore, it would be of interest and germane to the commission's review to see what information an application is submitting to the state. The Planning Commission, as just explained, would review each of these applications based on the scoring criteria and assemble a total score for each of the applicants and make a determination focusing on the relative ranking of whether or not an applicant met the minimum threshold to be passed on to the Town Council for a final decision, and how those rate relatively ranked, how they ranked relative to each other. And the council would make that final decision after interviewing applicants. There are a number of other town permit requirements that are anticipated would be involved with the review of these applications, specifically designer view, unless somebody were proposing an existing commercial storefront with no exterior changes, which is possible, but maybe not likely. Off-street parking and loading, we would obviously be applying the criteria that have been developed in chapter 17-110. A traffic impact permit, and this is where there's proposed to be a change from our current policy in recognition of the time extensive process that's currently contained in our town regulations, wherein applicant who may trigger the requirement for a traffic impact permit would have to propose the traffic study and have that approved by the Town Council, and then do the study, bring it to the Planning Commission for review, and then have a final decision by the Town Council. We're talking a multi-month process, and this has been applied for other businesses that may trigger traffic issues, the 100 additional vehicle criteria are trigger. But in this provision, we are recommending in chapter 5.56 that the Planning Commission would be responsible for accepting the methodology and reviewing the traffic impact permit for, for acceptability, so that council would only be reviewing that when the remainder of the, when the applications for all the projects are, are remanded to the council, assuming they meet the, the threshold.
Through the Chair, is, can I hold, should, can I ask a question or should I hold it till the end?
Let's wait until he finishes his staff report and then we'll ask questions.
Okay. And then the other thing that's proposed to be changed, and this isn't different from last meeting, is that the signage would be the same as for any other commercial retail business, and this is in recognition of the fact that signage is there to communicate a business location and provide that clarity so people aren't driving around trying to figure out where it is. So, that is another change that's being proposed, and, and that sign review would be embodied in the Planning Commission's original review of that. So, with those recommendations, staff requests that the commission provide comments on the application process, on the Chief of Police's review of the criminal history, and the Town Attorney has a brief comment about that. The Planning Commission's review of the traffic impact permit process, rather than the Town Council initially, and the draft review criteria rating system, although something that should be noted right now is that rating system is independent of the regulations of chapter 5-56, so there is no immediate hurry on that. Staff recommends that your focus for this next discussion would be on chapter 5-56, and time permitting, we could look at the review criteria rating system. And I'd like to turn this over to the Town Attorney for her comments about the criminal history background check.
Well, yeah, what we talked about earlier?
Yes.
Okay. So, the issue with the chief, the police chief approving or denying an application or an applicant based upon their criminal history, we would rather have it be where the police chief approves or denies, or simply notifies the manager about whether the criminal history meets or does not meet the requirements listed. So, it's not actually where the police chief is going to be exercising any discretion or determining somebody is up or down. It's basically whether or not the criminal history meets the requirements or the criminal history doesn't. Do you have anything you want to add about that?
Yeah, I just, I wrote for language, 'cause the Chair had pointed out, it was a little confusing, the section says approve or deny the criminal history, which is a little, probably a little awkward wording. So, it'd be something along the lines of, "The police chief shall review and report if the criminal history of the applicant owners and managers meet the minimum criteria pursuant to section 5.56.080." And that says neither the applicant owner or proposed prospective manager shall be, shall have been convicted of, and it lists the criteria like any offense relating possession, manufacture, sales, distribution of controlled substance, any offense involving use of force, then there's another one, offense involving theft, involving the sale of cannabis to minors or any common law felony. So, it has a criteria by which the police chief would just report if they meet this minimum criteria.
Is that the end of the staff report? Does any, do any commissioners have questions for staff?
Yes, I just, I wanted to make sure I understood, I guess, the condition for the traffic report or what the triggers for that. What are the, what are the triggers now for a traffic report? And what, and, and can you explain, or can you maybe try to clarify what you just said in terms of how these applicants would be assessed?
Yes. The, the trigger basically says if, in the view of staff, it's possible or likely that the business would generate more than 100 average daily traffic trips over the prior business, and then it would trigger the need for the rest of the TIP process. And in recognition of the fact that we're trying to assemble all of the applications in a complete form and, and do the pre-screening and then remand that to your Planning Commission, the challenge with our current TIP regulations is that they would have to go to the council first for approval of the methodology. And so, that would be a couple-month timeout because they would have to get approval of the methodology, then conduct the actual report, then take that to the Planning Commission. So, the, the recommendation in these regulations is that the Planning Commission would be responsible for doing the TIP portion of the review.
But, but, but I guess I have a question with the trigger, which is 100 trips, and so, I mean, this is probably not the time to go on the record, but one of the things, one of the items I was really concerned about with the retail was the traffic. For all practical intents and purposes, you know, we have a lot of problems already with our traffic and just having, you know, two ways out, sometimes one. And I guess where I get stuck is... And I guess where I get stuck is that before Proposition 64 was approved, this, you know, recreational adult use was nefarious criminal, so there are no metrics. There are, there's no way to anticipate how many people, you would almost have to look at how Cattati was affected, how, you know, you'd have to do a comparison, but there's nothing, I think, solid or concrete that you can look at to collect data and say, "Oh yeah, this is definitely going to generate more than 100 trips a day," so.
Well, I think staff who has been very cognizant of parking, traffic circulation issues, things of that nature, would probably err on the side of being conservative and assume that they have that potential to generate more than those trips. The net effect would be that they would have to do a traffic and parking study. And in terms of the metrics, you know, one of the advantages of having the Cattatis and the Berkleys and all the other businesses in fairly close proximity to our county is we can probably get a pretty good idea of what the patterns are for similar-sized businesses, et cetera. So, that's, that's probably the best way to look at something anyway, is to say, go out and do counts, and talk to the traffic professionals in the city, and get a good sense of what's happening in Cattati, or what's happening in Berkeley with that, with a particular mind, for example, for looking at PMP hour trips, and just getting an idea of how do we, how do we mitigate that issue? So, that would be a very robust part of the application, and it may not necessarily be unique to a particular applicant. I think any adult recreation retail storefront has that potential, so it's probably going to be part and parcel of any application. How it affects a particular location would, of course, also be part of the study, given the intersections, driveway approaches, traffic patterns on the thoroughfare on which the business location fronts, et cetera. So, all those would be very thoroughly looked at, because we don't want to end up with a traffic mess.
Right, but, so that wouldn't be a condition, it would be at the discretion of your analysis, correct?
Yeah, the preamble to whether we, staff believes it would trigger it, is a little bit vague, but again, given the circumstances and what the typical level of retail activity is with other such businesses, it's highly likely that they would have to do such a study.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to comment on the, on the traffic, that the applicant's business plan should have an assessment of the traffic that they're anticipating in terms of people served, and if, if they don't have that, it wouldn't be a good business plan to have projections of their expected clientele and profit and traffic generation. They'd be foolish not to have that.
Questions on my right?
My questions, I'm ready to comment on.
Phil?
My question is, I think this is, this ordinance is a lot closer than the other one was. I think this one's pretty good now with the red line. So I don't really have any questions, I have some comments on language.
Okay, I had a couple questions. 556080, the minimum criteria, and this gets into the criminal background. There was discussion at the last meeting by one commissioner who had concerns about somebody that may have paid their debt to society, perhaps not being considered within this, and then one of the asks was to see what ABC does in relation to that. So my question is just, did staff look into that? Did staff consider those comments? And what's the approach to this? Is this kind of where you want to be with this?
Well, it's a suggestion, I don't know if it's necessarily where we want to be. I mean, it's a suggestion to take up to council and see where they want to be, what they want to do. As far as what other cities do, some other cities have a reference to the state, so if they, if they can get a state license, if they can meet the state criminal history background requirements or whatever, then, then they're good with that. I do note there is some discretion in the state's requirements, there's some case-by-case review and analysis. And I will note also that I spoke with ABC, and there is also some discretion, believe it or not, in ABC regulations regarding licensing. For a new applicant coming in, you know, DUIs, for example, are not necessarily something that will prohibit them from getting a license, an alcohol license. But if there are so many that it shows a pattern, then potentially, yes, it would be disqualifying. So there is some discretion involved, and it's usually looked at on a case-by-case basis. I was going for here, we were trying to have something more definitive, so that a person who might want to fill out an application for a business would have some idea of whether or not they would be able to comply with the criminal history background requirements. And they would know that, for example, an offense involving use of force or violence upon the person of another, that domestic violence arrest, they had, and conviction, not just arrest, but conviction, would likely be disqualifying that. So, that's, that's kind of where we were going with it. Okay.
And then my last question on this relates to 556090D3, and it just, the language didn't make sense to me, so I just wanted to ask about it. It says, "The permity shall be responsible for all violations of this chapter and the MAU CRSA, or its implementing regulations, whether committed by the permity, its owners, or an employee, volunteer worker, or other agent of the permity, which violations occur in or about the premises." The "which violations occur" piece of it didn't make sense to me. I think it was going for where the violations occur at the location, but I wasn't quite sure.
Let's, let's go back to it again, which section? I think we have different, I'm not sure which one you're looking at.
Let me double-check.
In our version, it's D13.
D13?
Yes.
Okay.
You're right.
I think it may simply be a verbiage situation, where instead of saying "which," you say "said" or something, the idea, and the attorney can certainly correct me, is to make it clear that the permity is responsible for all actions of employees on or about the premises.
Right, and just the use of that word "which" didn't fit that for me, so I just wanted to bring that up, that it, that maybe it should have been "where" or something like that, if that was the intent.
Which violations? Which violations? Occur, you know, about the premises. That seems okay. Okay, you'll get it. Yeah, we'll look at it.
Thank you. Those are the only comments I had. Discussion items, or anybody want to?
I've got a couple of things. So just above 13, and under 12, were notification of state and local law violations, and then 12I says arrests of any employees, managers, owners, or volunteer workers for an offense other than a misdemeanor traffic offense. I would like to add a Roman small four, IV, at the bottom of that list, just before 13, and say exactly what you just said, actually, the commission of repeated offenses of any type would be another criteria. So that, I guess, you could say even, so if someone had 90 misdemeanor traffic offenses, then that should be a reportable, I mean, that should be an issue then, for, for a notification. And that's all. So I wouldn't, so I would not want, like, for example, it says, "other than misdemeanor traffic offenses," if there's so many of them, so I would add a four saying, "the commission of repeated offenses of any type." I'm sorry, my allergy issues here.
Through the chair, but is this not notification after the business has been established, not in determining whether they, they meet the criteria of the police department, but after they're, after they've been selected and they've set up, if there is an incident, then they're required to report it?
Right, but I think it shouldn't limit it, and one, I didn't like the limit of, "other than a misdemeanor traffic offense," because you can have a lot of misdemeanor traffic offenses, which indicates a problem with someone. So, I just thought I'd add, if, if anybody concurs, that's just an idea.
Was that it, Phil?
Yeah, that's basically it, yeah.
Michelle?
Thank you for taking an attempt at this. I just wanted to recommend that we use common language throughout. There's quite a few places where there's legal, legal ease on 5.560805, where we talk about common law, and then right after that, we talk about no locandere, and then, yeah, there are a number of places throughout, there just needs to be preponderance of evidence and rules of privilege, some of those, I, just going to common language, I think is a good idea. On the minimum criteria for issuance of a permit, I'm not so concerned about dishonesty or deceit, because I don't think it's as clear, clearly defined, as if you've been arrested for a controlled substance, we can define that. So, I wasn't so concerned about that. Under, I'm sorry, there's no page numbers here, but 5.56.0905, where it talks about consumption, I didn't know if consumption also included, like, body oils or body creams where it's rubbed, so I'll just leave that thinking with you. I was a little concerned about the terms of permit and renewal procedure, which is 5.56.100, where C, there's like 120-day period that there could be some vacancies, you know, just a time where there's, it's not, not clear what's going on with a business, and if it's an annual permit requirement, and they've got a lot of investments in their operating costs, administrative overhead, and other things, how does that feel to a business to have all of that time kind of up in the air? So I just wanted to maybe point that out, just that timing, how do we tighten it up, or how do we make it a little bit easier? And just on the cannabis business permit criteria, maybe just looking at that from the perspective of, how would you take all those sub-bullets and qualify them under the point total? So, on the, just on this item two, if you have 30 points, quality of operating plan, but you've got six points below it, and maybe you don't necessarily, are you asking for proof of some of these as part of your original submittal? I mean, you don't have to answer those questions, I'm just trying to figure out how whoever's scoring is going to really be able to reach these conclusions, and so maybe looking at that a little bit more, but otherwise, thanks for the opportunity to look at that. Good attempt.
Yeah, in, in the criteria list, I did have one more thing. I think we need to add security. Under 30, 30 points, quality of operating plan, security isn't mentioned, and a lot of dispensaries have a little, a private officer, or a door that's locked and needs a card from the other office, you know, to get into that location. I mean, I've seen places with incredible, you know, bulletproof glass and stuff, so, two doors, all kinds of different schemes, so security just generally.
Can I ask a question about security? Isn't that required by the state? As is odor mitigation?
Yes, very detailed requirement, so, we could also reference it in.
Okay.
So on my left, any questions, comments on five? On five first, and then we'll go to the, I thought we'd finish up five.
No, I'm, I'm fine, I think you guys are moving in the right direction.
Okay, so, I think we're done with five, let's go to the draft scoring criteria on my left. Comments?
I, I agree with the commissioner's suggestion that, since we'll be reviewing these, if we could add some type of weight to the different subcategories within the points. For instance, financial capacity, that might be, is that like 20 of the 40 points, or business design layout, security, anyway, something, we don't have to talk about it, but in the, moving forward, that could be helpful.
Is that it? Any other questions on the?
Well, there's just some, some things, so the 40-point thing, business qualifications and business plan, it isn't actually mentioned in any of the bullet points that they have a business plan. I mean, there is such thing as a business having a business plan, it could be a little notebook, or PowerPoint, or something, but the fact that someone might come up with a business plan to present would be a plus, because they're thinking this through. So that would be a big, you know, mental leap for some, but it would be a real plus for someone who could do that. So that, that's an interesting idea to add that.
Okay, so, I took a look at these today and had some questions, because I'm trying to look at this from the standpoint of somebody filling out an application and then also reviewing it. So in the, the business qualifications and business plan section, we've got bullets, innovative or boutique, business models consistent with a Fairfax community. I'm not sure how I would score that, rate that, or, I mean, what is innovative or boutique business models consistent with a Fairfax community, nor am I sure that an applicant may be familiar with that, or know how to respond to that. The same thing, additional information that demonstrates the ability to operate in a matter consistent with the values of the town is a little bit vague, so on, on that section, in the quality of the operating plan, employee training about, above the state requirements, I'm not familiar with what, you know, the state does require, and then what would we be looking for, or the town would be looking for in types of training above that, that would merit scoring? It's vague. Down in the public benefits, when we talk social equity, I'm not sure that I would need to look at principals who earn at or below medium household income. I think that's kind of restrictive. I think that's kind of restrictive, isn't the right term I'm looking for, but it could be restrictive. I think, you know, if you look at minority owned or small business, those are things that are familiar with, like governmental contracting and things like that, when you look at that. So I'm a little unsure of that one. When we look, it says, offer medical cannabis bullet. So a question that I had on that was, are we looking at that for just businesses that would be medical business? I mean, if you had a dispensary, or if you had retail only, how would offering medical cannabis fit into that? Or patient service? Or experience serving patients? You may be having somebody come in doing a delivery business, or doing, if you had a retail, retail recreational, those things may not fit their business. So I was a little confused on that. The same with reduced cost products to low income. And then the green business rating is certified or qualifies for certification. So I looked a little bit, like, on the county's website on that. And it's a, it's an application process. I don't know if you had a business that was just starting out, if you would know if they qualify for certification, if they haven't gone through a process already to do that. So that was just, you know, a thought in my mind. It's one thing if you've got a business that's been operating, that may have the certification already, or have familiarity with that. But if you have somebody that's just starting out a business, I don't know that qualifying for certification is applicable, since they'd be going through, you know, a process. And part of that process is an ongoing process where they move along in that. So I don't know how we would look at that. So those are my comments.
Just one curious thing, under public benefits, is it says, participation and support of local youth-serving prevention and education programs and/or adult addiction programs. And I just was thinking, do we want, do we want a owner of one of these dispensaries to actually participate in that kind of activity? I mean, what do they, what do they, or would, or would we want a percentage of their income donated to some cause that does that? You know? And so, knowing, like, people who might be involved in the business, might not really fit talking to kids about prevention. So I'm just thinking whether that would be a possibility, or whether we actually want them to participate, or whether we want them to kind of make a donation or something.
That would probably be an ongoing conversation. We know that there are a number of very good youth-oriented programs out there. So I think that would be a conversation probably ongoing with the town, and also with applicants to decide what's appropriate. Would it be financial support? Would it be discussions with peer groups, things like that? There's any number of programs out there. So it's just finding what, what seems to be a good fit.
So, again, when you're looking at reviewing an application and scoring it, then are you looking, in that, are you looking for, you know, an applicant to be wanting or willing to do that versus coming in, having done that? Because I think we've talked in the past about, you know, an education component along with this. So are you just asking if they'd be willing to participate, like a yes or no versus, I mean, I'm looking again at this from kind of a review scoring process. So that would just need some clarification. Any other comments on the criteria for tonight?
I have a, you know, I presented this before, and I can give this to you. San Francisco has this little pamphlet that they force, apparently, at least dispensaries to have on display, that talk about safe consumption of cannabis products, facts and your health. And I think it might behoove the town to come up with something similar to this to, I mean, this is a educational piece, and might, you know, help with the town's liability in this, in this instance, perhaps. But if you want another one, I've got another one here, so.
Yeah, I've got a copy of that. And that's the type of adult education that, you know, the, these are, some of this is throwing the challenge to applicants and saying, you know, what do you got? I mean, how are you doing this? How seriously are you taking this?
And I was, I was gonna say that San Francisco Police Department and the Department of Public Health already has, they have ordinances already in place for education. So, the, yeah, the Police Department code addresses education, and Public Health Department.
Any other comments on the scoring? I mean, on that criteria? All right. I think we're done with that. Thank you. Any corrections on the minutes from March 14th?
I do.
Was that you, Michelle?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
So on the March 14th, minutes, page five, Commissioner Rodriguez, first bullet, she supports the staff recommendation as proposed, it wasn't writing. The second bullet, just delete they should, because I was supporting, maintaining the exception in that section, so it doesn't need they should. On page six, what, because these minutes follow, could you, I'm sorry, could you say that again? Because I thought you talked about, I thought you were talking about your first bullet where you spoke, but it sounds like you were down in the middle somewhere. On page five, first bullet, she supports the staff right, the staff recommendation is proposed, so writing is recommendation. The second bullet, the words they should should be deleted. On page six, Commissioner Rodriguez, wouldn't, when we make recommendations that are not supported by enough text, and because these recommendations are available, I mean, excuse me, these minutes are available for our lives, they're supposed to describe what's happening. So this third bullet, she supports chapter seventeen, blah, blah. Unless that document's attached, it needs an explanation, show it should read, she supports chapter seventeen, point one, one, oh, point oh, four, oh, A, one, cannabis retail uses, storefront retailers in zones, CH, Commercial Highway, and CC, Central Commercial. And then on page seven, similar, bullet three, she supported C1 with the option, so it should say parking at one per five hundred square feet of the retail storefront, and one for every two employees.
If I might interject, it would probably be helpful if you were doing a recitation, that if you could reference that verbally, because, as you say, the, the reference is before us that night, but it may be more challenging to obtain that. But it's, it's always useful to actually go on record and say, instead of just listing the chapters, to say what it is, in, in real time, rather than after the fact.
I think I, I'm saying I do, and they're not getting in the minutes.
Okay.
So, thank you.
So, we're, we're actually gonna take off, but I really wanted to thank the commission for all your time and effort on cannabis. I know it took a lot of meetings and a lot of work, and I know there's still things that still need to be resolved. But the council struggles with it, sent it to you, and you worked out a lot of the detail, and it just, you just need to know we're very great, grateful for all your hard work on the cannabis or nits. So we do appreciate that.
Thank you. You guys don't want to stay?
Fences sounds pretty interesting. I'm gonna go watch it at home.
Phil, did you have corrections on March 14th?
No, I didn't. The minutes are fantastic. You know, keep up the good work, they're amazing.
Okay, I have a couple. Page two, last paragraph, referencing Planning Director Burdo's comments on traffic impact study methodology. It's written as, Planning Director Burdo discussed the permit and how the town council normally approves the methodology for the study, but would not that for purposes of processing cannabis applications? I think that's missing a couple of words in there.
Yeah, add do, would not do that.
But would not do that. Okay. Page four, comments by Don Carney at the top. It just has his street as Mountain View, so it's not clear that he's not from Mountain View versus living on Mountain View Road. So if we could just add the road to that. And then page five, comments by Commissioner Green, the third bullet, I think the word they should read the. And that's all the comments I had on the March 14th. Norma? Esther wasn't here, so, Norma, any comments?
On March?
March 14th.
Still on March 14th?
Yeah.
No, I have no comments.
March 21st, minutes. On my right?
And so if I'm not making the recommendation, if I, yeah, okay. On page six, on item one, the noes are normally described why noes occur, so that if it's ever opposed, that information is available. And it is shown as an example on some of the other ones in here. So the, the noes here was that we needed the spotted owl and NAPA false indigo study to understand the project impact and design requirements. And then on page nine, I'm not sure what this was, and I'm not sure we can approve it, because at the top, item two, it says, the modification in number sixteen is suggested by Principal Planner Neal. But then it's not described in the body of the text. And so if it was described in the body of the text, or maybe it was this, was it Principal Planner Neal stated staff wanted to add a condition about exterior lighting on the dark fixtures? Was that it? Directing the light downward and avoiding light seepage? Was that what was modified? I'm going between, I'm on nine, at the very top, and it's the motion. And the motion was to remove the letter I. And then two was, the modification to condition sixteen is suggested by Principal Planner Neal. But then in the body of the text, it doesn't talk about you modifying condition sixteen. So I don't know if it was under this second paragraph on page eight, where it says, Principal Planner Neal stated staff wanted to add a condition about exterior lighting? Is that, that would have been a new condition, right? Not a modification, oh, I don't know. So I don't know what this is modifying.
We could make sure that we clarify that in the, in a, get a sentence that explains that. Because it was clear in the motion, obviously.
I'm gonna mark it as check and clarify, okay? Because I, I don't remember. And on page eleven, under Commissioner Rodriguez, in the middle, it was second line, respect, respect to the area beyond the property line. It was in between the property lines. And, and I had recommended denial, not because of impervious surface concerns, but it should reach, the house should be smaller, because I have, and because I have concerns about hydrology and geology and related slides. Thank you.
Norma, any comments on March 21st?
No.
I do have a couple. Where'd they go? Excuse me. I was just noticing on page five, one, two, three, four, down, second to the last bullet, it says she would like, so, yes, she would like to add an additional condition to two A, but it doesn't say what the condition is, and I can't remember. So it's just kind of vague. Then also, on page eight, motion to approve. Oh, no. Well, this is a motion to approve, so that's okay. That's fine. Yeah, that's it.
On page three, comments by Carl Diehl. His last name was just spelled wrong, it should be D-I-E-H-L. That was the only correction I had on that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 14th with the corrections made?
I move to approve with the corrections made.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed.
I'm sorry.
I'm opposed.
So all approved, Michelle opposed. For the minutes from March 21st?
I thought we had to get clarification on those.
Well, on March 21st, that's what I'm gonna ask. You mean for March 21st? So for the minutes for March 21st, does the commission want to have those come back with those clarifications that were mentioned by commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds great.
So can you bring those back at the next meeting? Thank you. Now we're going on to Planning Director's report.
Okay, we've been through a lot tonight, so I'll keep this brief. There was a, an agendized item discussing fences, and it was, it's actually very brief, and there's no action, or even really deliberation requested, it's just an informational update, which is that this issue is brought up by a particular constituent regarding types of fences that may not fall under our current regulations. Briefly, something has to be affixed to the ground to be considered a structure, to be regulated. And so the concern regarding fire safety might be where somebody should talk to the fire department, because that's obviously within their purview. If they think that somebody has erected something that's a fire hazard, they should talk to fire, and if fire agrees, then fire will do something about it. So simply dealing with a fabric fence on that basis, it's just like, if you, if you have a problem with a fabric fence, because you think it might be fire and safe, beyond that, in terms of stylistic concerns, aesthetics, design review, if the Commission wants, we could bring that back at some future date for discussion. We have a lot on our plate right now, so I can't guarantee that this would be at the top of our zone change items, but I'd be curious to see if the Commission wants us to return at some point for further discussion of that. Oh, and then other Planning Directors' items. Excuse me. The town council did very briefly deliberate on maximum house size. However, given that they had a really heavy agenda, aside from some very brief comments, they simply continued that item to their scheduled special meeting taking place on the 23rd of this month. So, they'll be considering 5G first and then maximum house size afterwards. So, it's proceeding along with all due speed, and hopefully, we'll get done with that at some point as well. And I can't think of anything else. I'm sorry if there were other items that I was contemplating discussing, but it's probably a good thing.
Okay. Commissioner comments?
I just wanted to ask, what's next on our work plan, Ben?
That was actually one of the items that we're going to be bringing up, is looking at a work plan. The council has already reviewed that, so I would imagine we very likely could be having a conversation about what an appropriate time is in May or June at the latest, feeding into the budget discussions about that. Miranda Heights is going to be going active in the near future in terms of request for proposal for bids on an environmental impact report. We will be doing, as a follow-up, I intend to take... to have the Commission lead a discussion on a scoping session. So, once we've selected the consultants, to afford the public an opportunity to comment on what they believe are important things for review in that EIR.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
Is she done? Are you done?
Sorry.
So, on that point, so there wasn't a previous certified EIR, so it's not like an addendum or something? Okay, that product that was in the library, what was that? It said EIR for Miranda Heights. It was just background reports or something? It's huge binders.
Yeah. That's the applicant's submittal, so...
Oh, okay.
What he's attempting to do is to say, here are the topical areas that are likely to be discussed in the EIR.
Oh.
And so, he's got that really thick binder that, you know, has geotechnical hydrology, et cetera, but it's not... it's not an EIR.
Okay. Thank you.
I had two... well, one question, one comment. Cafe Lotus. So, I don't recall approving that paint color. I don't remember a specific paint color coming before us.
Yeah, because exterior color is no longer under your purview. It was accidentally, I believe, eliminated from the code as one of the things that... and he wasn't... so, he moved the doors, but color, exterior color changes, is no longer under the purview of the Design Review Board or the Planning Commission.
So, add that to your list, Ben.
Yeah. What happened was, it used to be the first thing listed under the Design Review, you know, what Design Review looked at, and when they added 50% remodels, were now going to be reviewed by the Design Review Board, they accidentally took that out and replaced it with 50% remodels, and I don't believe that was their intention, but that's what happened. So, it's no longer in the code.
Well, maybe they should put it back in.
Well...
It's on our list. I remember how we had a debate about whether, was it Bliss store? It was going to be sky blue or something, and we've had other color discussions.
I mean, if someone, you know, if someone's doing new construction, like the way station, right? You can sometimes get into materials and stuff, but he... you know, Lotus Cafe made very minimal changes to the exterior of the building, and paint was not... it's not under your purview right now.
You know, I have to say, it's just because he has that building that goes all the way to the back. As you are approaching east, or as you are heading out of town, is it Center or Broadway? It's... can we... can I just personally request that it be changed?
Well, what he's told the building official is that he's planning on overlaying it with another color that's going to minimize the pinkness of it, right? But that's just... I heard that from the building official who talked to him about it.
Okay. Because it's almost okay with just the facade, but it's that whole length of the building back.
I'm afraid the only avenue would be if you tried to go to the council and asked them to declare it a nuisance, and I think that's a long shot, you know? It's just...
Anything else?
I eat there alone. I'll have a word with him. I have one more, one comment.
Well, just a general comment. I wanted to thank staff and our attorneys for all your hard work and your patience on the cannabis ordinance. And I also, you know, if anybody's still listening, I would just encourage people to come out, whether you're for or against cannabis. I would really encourage you to come out and speak your mind. I started off totally opposite of where I ended up today, and that was largely due to public comment. I was very... I thought it was very compelling, and I learned a lot, and it kind of pushed me to probe and ask more questions. So, if you are listening, it does make a difference. Your comments and what you think does make a difference, so, thanks.
Thank you. I've got a couple comments. One, we had... on the 21st, we had 251 SCENIC, if you remember that, that we had a robust discussion on that application. We had a lot of the community here for that. Part of that was the Hill Area Residential Development Permit, a design review, encroachment, and setback variances. And then, and we did our work on that. And then I looked at the agenda for the April 3 Town Council meeting, and on that agenda, and what they heard was variance for granting a driveway variance on that same property. Under town code 12.12.090, a driveway can be 20 feet wide, and anything over 20 feet has to have a variance. So, I was surprised when I saw that on the agenda after we had just had a hearing on that application with robust public comment. And when you look at 12.12.090, it states that the deciding body for a variance on that is the town council, not the Planning Commission. There was nobody there, you know, from the public to comment on that. I'm not even sure that perhaps some of the council members were necessarily aware of what had gone on before, or, you know, the discussions that were had by members of the community. So, when we look at... I mean, I would just like to ask that we change that code so that that type of variance is part of what the Planning Commission does when they look at an application.
It's on the list. It has been for a long time.
Because staff, planning staff, put a lot of work into that. We put a lot of work into that. The community was here. Then, it required more staff time to present it to the town council and go through that process. The town council is always concerned about how many things they look at and the time council meetings take. So, I would... you know, and I know staff has a long list of things that, you know, we should be reviewing for changing, and I don't think that list is going to get any shorter. It's probably going to get longer. So, I would like to hope that we'd be able to carve out a little bit, not to address everything, but maybe to do a few at a time so that we can kind of put a little effort into... and I know there's a lot of stuff that we need to fix, but I'm just putting that out there and letting the rest of the Commissioners know what occurred with that application and know about the driveway variances going to the town council. Because there's always also issues of like, well, you know, where does appeal go for part of that? What's the 10-day appeal process? It just really needs to go back to be a part of the package for the Planning Commission.
And so, are you saying that that staff report didn't describe the whole other bit that we had spent all that time on?
It was in there, and we had... and the resolution was there, but I don't know how much effort, you know, and so...
Just so you know, the neighbors did receive another notice about that.
Okay.
That discretionary approval was noticed to the neighbors, so they made the choice not to show up.
Sorry. You and I talked about this, and this may be one of the ones you forgot to mention during your comments, but I've noticed Commissioners packets on items that are continued, that in the past, I think, when we've had an item continued, you know, the second hearing of that item, we would get everything we had in the first packet, so it was all together, and we can kind of go back and forth. And I think on one of those items we had continue, I think Michelle had had questions about it. That was material that wasn't in the second time we saw it, but was in the first. So, I think there's... I think staff is kind of doing a different process now in maybe not putting everything together going forward, and that's fine with me. I think I just ask that staff talk about those process changes. So, if we're in a situation like that, we have an item that's continued, then maybe we know because we're not going to get all the material in every packet every time, that Commissioners individually might want to keep their packet, or just be aware of that, that they may need to look back on the material that they had before, because not everything is going to be carried forward.
Yes. Thank you for reminding me about that and bringing this up, is that when you do have a continued item in the efforts, especially some of these really unwieldy applications, that, you know, you're talking 50 or 75 pages, it just turns into a phone book, a Manhattan phone book, if you try to save everything. And of course, as we know from many of our deliberations that go over multiple meetings, it's a process. So, you start one place with one study, and in the next meeting, you're three studies beyond it. But I would say, as a procedural matter, hang on to your... if it does get continued, hang on to that packet and keep it with you so that when the next staff report comes along, we try to reference the things that are still relevant, but obviously, you may have germane questions or comments, and if you don't have that material in front of you, it may hinder your subsequent review. So, if it's continued, pull that material out and hang on to it until the next meeting.
Thanks. Knowing that would help us. And my last one is the historical downtown survey. So, you know, we keep asking for a status of that and what the volunteer has accomplished to date. So, if you could speak... if you want to speak a little to that tonight, or you want to do more?
Yes.
Okay.
I have spoken to Ms. DeBaker, and her intention was to assemble a group of volunteers, and we met and kind of went over parameters, agreed upon a selection of iconic buildings to focus her efforts and her group's efforts. The challenge is, and we've seen this many times before, is that when you have a group of volunteers, it's kind of dependent on their enthusiasm and availability. And in talking to her recently, that hasn't turned out to be as much of a resource as she would have hoped. So, I have rekindled or encouraged her to initiate her efforts however she can, and she indicated she's on vacation right now, but intends to take that up forthwith when she gets back from vacation. So, we should have some information. I can't give you a timeline on that, but in terms of character-defining features and things of that nature, we're hoping to have progress. Well, we should have progress this coming fiscal year.
So, just for clarity, has there been any work done on it to date? It doesn't sound like there has been. I just wanted to clarify that.
She's been doing some work. It just hasn't been... they haven't gotten... she hasn't gotten as far as she would have liked.
Do you have a sense of, you know, if you looked at that as a project, what percent complete that would be? Just asking.
I do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, here, I'm glad you brought that up, because this book here lists historical buildings in Fairfax. This is a great way to start. Why don't we start with this book? And we have a catalog built in right here. These guys did a terrific job, William and Brian Sager, Images of America.
Yes, we're familiar, and Cassidy, obviously, is familiar.
I would say, you know, we're 3% to 5% on our way to the historical with just this book.
The question is things like historic context statements, periods of significance, areas, and things like that.
If you haven't read it, check it out.
Any other comments? Michelle?
I would really like to see a discussion amongst the Planning Commission on improved kind of timely decision-making. I'm challenged by the way that we have meetings, and I would like to schedule something to just talk a little bit about that. If you want me to talk a little bit more, I'm happy to do that.
I'm not sure I'm clear on what you're talking about. You could talk a little bit to me?
I think that there's a much more effective way that we can be conducting meetings to get to a conclusion. We have expert staff who have drafted staff reports and a recommendation, and we can... when we get to decisions on things, we can use that as a basis for making a decision. Does anyone have any changes from the resolution that's presented before you? If yes, or if no, do I have a motion? I'm challenged by every topic area that is possible to talk about, that we ask for each one of our feedback, when we all may not have feedback on that topic. We may only have one general topic that we're interested in discussing. And the result of the way that we're conducting meetings is, we're not streamlined on what are the topics staff wants us to talk about. How do we kind of just talk about those issues? Do we have any particular changes that affects the resolution? And let's kind of move on. Having each of us talk about topics that we don't have an opinion on is frankly, a waste of time, and we're here hours and hours and hours discussing issues that maybe we all don't want to talk about. And I don't know if anybody else, similar opinion?
That's a good point. I've also noticed that we tend to go over a lot of the same stuff and repeat each other. Perhaps we could streamline some of that. And, well, we won't be here until midnight tonight. I'm very grateful for that, but it's a rare occasion when we don't see midnight, and I think we should talk about some limits on the timeframe, as council does.
I was just going to say, Michelle, I think it's actually gotten a little bit better in some regards, but I think we can... in some regards, but I think we can improve. I think there are certain corrections, I think, that can be taken offline. You know, there's, we know that staff works really hard to get these staff reports to us in time for us to read them, and, you know, typos happen, and so I think that's a very good point there. There's a lot of minutia that can get handled offline that doesn't really affect the overall decision or conclusion. I think when I started off, I didn't really know a lot about the rules of, you know, who decided what, and maybe, you know, sometimes I think staff forgets what they know, and sometimes it would help us maybe hear it from you, you know? The fire department has jurisdiction over X, Y, and Z. They're going to look at this. And I think for the most part, everybody knows that now, but there are certain things that are very black and white that we can't really influence or decide on. And, you know, I think sometimes that helps to know. Like, I know that we spend a lot of time talking, and, and I think it's very valuable to talk about conservation and green building and everything, but there are already codes that have been drafted and huge binders and volumes, and so I think it's a very noble and worthwhile effort, but sometimes there are already things in place that take care of that. And so, and a lot of people don't know that unless you do this for a living, or you're in your position and have been doing this a long time. So, you know, just sometimes, and I don't know when would be the appropriate time, and maybe you guys tell us what you would like to see us improve on. Like, do we spend too much time on something? So, because you guys are very patient, I think, with us sometimes, so.
If there's a commission consensus, we would be happy to look at ways to run meetings as efficiently as possible, or suggestions, or just topics, and just things, things along the lines of, you know, do we, do we poll people? When's appropriate to poll commissioners? You know, should it be, do you have any comments? Things like that, just options for deliberations, and then see what the consensus of the commission is, because I think just between us, I, I think this commission runs, runs a more streamlined operation than other decision-makers. But that's not to say that there aren't opportunities to improve that, and that's not to say that there is some angst over the length of other decision-makers' meetings as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second the motion.
I'm in favor.
Who's not in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned.